Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the January 27, 2020 meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the DeKalb City Council. Prior to our call to order tonight and our roll call, I'd like to let everyone know, anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any of the items on our agenda, we have two considerations on the agenda tonight. One is a fleet leasing program, the other is a presentation by the DeKalb County Basics Program of the Regional Office of Education. If you have comments, we'd like to speak to those items, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, you're more than welcome to do that. We'd simply ask that you fill out a speaker request form there in the back of the room in the foyer and get those to our executive assistant, Ruth Scott, who was working our meeting tonight, and she will get those up to me. So with that, I'd like to ask Ms. Scott to call the roll, please.
Morris?
Here.
Fanouken?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Approving the agenda, the two items on the agenda, number one and number two under considerations. Are there any additions or deletions to this agenda? If not, I'd ask a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we approve the agenda for the Committee of the Whole. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Tonight's agenda is approved as printed. There is no public participation this evening. We have no speaker request forms, so we'll move right to item D on the agenda, and those are the considerations. The first one is the consideration of a fleet leasing program. And Ray, are you going to take the mantle at this point? Okay, and our Assistant City Manager, Ray Munch, will lead this discussion. Ray?
First, I'll defer to the city manager if you have any comments.
I was going to give you a rousing introduction, but right to you. I was just going to remind everybody that back when we were looking at the city's, at that time, proposed FY '20 budget back in November, we talked as we were going through the capital funds about the value of looking at a fleet leasing program, and I think the council was supportive of that. Kudos to Ray for picking up the mantle of that and doing a lot of background research, and he's here tonight to present a couple of options to you based on that research.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as the city manager indicated, as we went through the budget process this year, one of the main objectives was to begin taking a bite out of the apple on some of the deferred fleet replacements and other capital expenditures such as road maintenance. And we're in a fortunate position this budget year to be able to make some sizable purchases, things like fire trucks and dump trucks that we haven't been able to purchase in quite a while. But the reality is, is we have that capability in 2020 because we haven't spent the funds over the past two or three fiscal years. So there's some excess fund balance that exists that gives us the ability to make those purchases. But as we know, we have some revenue constraints going to our capital funds, and my focus tonight is really going to be on Fund 420, which are Capital Equipment Replacement Fund. This is the fund that most of the fleet purchases come out of, with the exception of water, capital vehicles, and things of that nature. The issue's pretty clear. We've talked about it quite a bit, so I'm not going to belabor the point too much tonight. But for some of the council members, if you go back to 2017, the study was done by EEI and Ellers to look at an asset management plan for streets and fleet, and at that time, they determined that at least 55% of our fleet was beyond its useful life. Again, that's in 2017, and we haven't done much to right the ship on that since that time. The real issue in establishing a good fleet replacement program is capital funding and cash flow. So that study pointed to the fact that in order to get back on track with our fleet replacement, we should be spending about $1.5 million a year. The reality is that that fund currently sees about $555,000 a year in revenue, and that's increased this year because of the increase in the locomotor fuel tax that the council passed late in 2019. So in reality, we're making progress, but as you can see, we're still close to $1 million shy of being able to put to work the funds that are necessary to get back on schedule. The other thing I want you to keep in mind, as we talk about this, is that fund doesn't just address fleet. It's all capital equipment that comes out of funds. So you're talking about other very expensive pieces of equipment that the city needs. In the coming year, we're going to have to replace two heart monitors on our ambulances because of new FDA requirements, talking about $60,000. There's consideration of a police body camera program, IT infrastructure and storage, replacement of police CAD and RMS software in the coming years, and you can see the prices for those items in some instances are quite high, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So as we talk about this and the issue in this fund, again, fleet is the important component of it. There's other things that have to be paid for out of that fund. So very briefly, our current fleet purchasing model is pretty simple. We pay cash for all our assets. So if we need a new police car, we go to market, we either buy it on a state bid or put it out to bid and take the lowest responsible bid, and we pay full cash price for the vehicle. That's been the process for the past several years, and that's the process moving forward, barring any substantial changes. Departments typically identify needs and make requests during the budget process. Those are evaluated and approved through the budget process. The purchases themselves ultimately come back to the city council for final approval when we're ready to make the actual acquisition, and then the vehicle is purchased. There's obviously pros and cons of that model. It's a pretty simple and straightforward process, and at the end, we have outright ownership of all of those assets that we've paid cash for. There's also no interest or carrying costs for any of those assets. There's some obvious disadvantages when you're cash constrained. You know, the ability to fund those high-priced assets, like a fire engine that costs half a million dollars, or a dump truck that costs $185,000, become very difficult to acquire because over time, as you're purchasing those assets, you're drawing down your fund balances very quickly, which is what we're going to experience this year after we make some of those acquisitions. And ultimately, that has a tendency to extend your replacement cycles if you're not putting the cash back into that fund. So as we talk about the alternatives to what we do right now, there are several things that we've looked at. There's probably other options out there to look at longer term that make some sense. But the two that we're going to present to you tonight, first is tax-exempt lease purchasing. So when we use the term lease, this one's a little bit different in that it's not a true lease. This is more of a lease financing or a lease-to-own type of program, where you go out to the market for financing through a bank or a finance company. They provide you with the capital funds upfront, and then you, over time, pay interest on those funds, and at the end of a five- or a seven-year lease term, you have ownership of the asset, and that helps you from a cash flow perspective. It provides immediate access to capital funding, which is important, again, for those higher-priced assets like fire trucks. The interest on these are pretty low because the tax-exempt portion comes in, because the money is essentially being loaned to a municipality, the lender gets a tax advantage from the IRS, and that's why they can offer lower interest rates on these. There's no end-of-lease buyouts, and it's not considered long-term debt. So if the city were to, say, seek $500,000 or $500,000 in tax-exempt lease financing, that doesn't go against our long-term debt, doesn't have any impacts on your bond ratings, things like that. Obviously, there are interest costs associated with any borrowing of money, so that's a consideration. Again, the interest rates on these are a little bit lower than what you might see in the market, but again, that's a consideration over the long term. Ultimately, the vehicle costs more money. The other issue is you have to really commit to your financing over time and have somebody that stays on top of the ball in terms of annual budgeting for all these assets once you start to put financing in place. You know, you own the asset, but there's non-appropriation clauses with these where if you can't afford the payment in any budget year, basically, the lease asset is your collateral. So you basically lose the vehicle. So it's important over time to make sure that you're budgeting these payments over five, seven, 10 years of that term. The other option that we've looked at is open-ended equity leasing. This is a program that's becoming increasingly popular in the municipal space. It is a little bit more akin to what you think of when you hear the term "vehicle leasing", but it is different than what you would find if you walked into a Ford or a Chevy dealership and leased a vehicle. Those are typically referred to as closed-end leases. In this scenario, you are leasing a vehicle for a term, and at the end of the term, you build up some equity in the vehicle. So once you turn it over after, say, a five-year term and put a lease on a new replacement vehicle, you have the equity from the previous vehicle to roll into that. So that's sort of the advantage in this. There's no mileage restrictions. The terms are typically set, and you know what the costs are upfront. You can make any of the modifications you want to the vehicle. So if it's a police car, you can put light bars and sirens and things of that on it, all your vehicle markings. You can outfit dump bodies and snowplows and things like that. Again, the advantage of a program like this is it helps you with your cash flow. You don't have to put in all the cash upfront to acquire a new vehicle. And the firm that we've been in discussions with at this point is Enterprise, which is a national recognizable company that does leasing and car rental. They obviously have leveraged buying power because they're acquiring vehicles en masse. So they have some buying advantages there. Obviously, there, again, is with all these programs I'm describing, there's probably some drawbacks that need to be considered. That is, we typically wouldn't replace a vehicle on a five-year schedule. So at the end of that five-year period, you're either rolling that vehicle into a new lease or you're potentially paying for an end-of-lease buyout. The other thing to consider is with these types of programs, we're really focused on light-duty fleet. So in public works, that would be pickup trucks, light dump trucks, things of that nature, police squad cars. So it doesn't really help us on some of the bigger, more expensive assets, but it does help with that cash flow issue that we have. So to help understand the advantages that we might see from any one or a combination of these models, we did a cash flow analysis, and we made some assumptions on that. So we assume that we see about a 1% annual revenue growth in Fund 420. That includes a $50,000 contribution that we'll see from NIU under our Fire Services Agreement. We'll also lose $40,000 in revenue annually in this fund come 2021 because there is some revenue baked in there from a sales tax sharing agreement with the county from Sycamore Road. And the other assumption we made is that we would reserve $75,000 annually for other equipment purchases, such as those things I described earlier. As you can see, when you look at this cash flow analysis, as you start to put some of the other options in play, again, cash flow is there, and it leverages your buying to be able to put more vehicle replacements in play. So the green line at the bottom is a cash-only purchase model. And when we look at that in terms of total fleet units replaced over a five-year period, we would have the capacity to replace about 24 vehicles. If we were to do a cash program and roll tax-exempt lease financing into that, and what I did there is I considered that for any asset with a value over $100,000, you're looking at potentially replacing 34 vehicles over the five years. And if you were to kind of tie all these options together, cash, tax-exempt lease financing, and the Enterprise Equity Leasing Program, you could see that get as high as 49 vehicles. Again, I said there's a big consideration on cash flow and preservation of cash flow. So you can see on this next slide that the other advantage we get is keeping some of the money in the fund balance to have for other purposes. So again, if we're merely going out and paying cash for all vehicles, as I mentioned, that depletes fund balance very quickly. At the end of five years, we're looking at a cash reserve balance of less than $30,000. Again, if you put some tax-exempt lease financing into play, you're at about $40,000 at the end of five years. And if we went to the model where we incorporated all these different programs, you could potentially see a cash fund balance closer to $165,000 at the end of a five-year period. So again, these different options, we're looking for some feedback as to if council has any preferences. I'll be pretty candid with you that we're in a situation that isn't ideal. And if we were in an ideal situation where we were able to fund our fleet replacements adequately, and we had a program in place, I don't know that any one of these is the best option, but given our constraints at the time, I think they're worth consideration and taking a deeper dive into. Matt Deland is here from Enterprise. Matt's no stranger to DeKalb. He's an NIU grad and actually did an internship with the DCEDC, so he's familiar with DeKalb and our situation a little bit. So if there's questions about that program in particular, I think Matt would be happy to answer any questions. But, you know, I think the issue's pretty clear. It's determining how we want to tackle this and with what type of urgency, you know, we want to do so. Again, we're in a good spot this year. Next year, we're sort of going to be right back where we've been the last few years, where we're going to be talking about the one, two, three vehicles that we can afford to replace as opposed to the, you know, seven or eight we'll do this year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or turn it over to Matt if you would like any information from him.
We certainly have a transportation guru as a member of our city council, and that's our second ward alderman, Bill Fanouken, who for anyone who may not know, Bill was the transportation manager at Northern for many, many years, and probably has a pretty good understanding of leasing and buying, et cetera. So Bill, I see that your hand is up?
I did, yes.
And you'd like to make a comment?
I would, a couple of things. I think Ray and I had a conversation earlier today, and we both agreed that if cash flow wasn't an issue, the long-term, most cost-effective way to do this is cash purchase. That's what we did at the university. We were able to do that successfully for a number of years and document that it was cheaper than getting in any kind of leasing program. The only vehicles that we ever did do any kind of lease-to-buy purchase was a couple of over-the-road coaches that were about $600,000 apiece. So obviously, with the heavy-duty equipment, that makes a little bit different of a story. But understanding the cash flow, I think we certainly need to be open-minded about where we try and go right away. Ray, one of the other questions I had that, you know, in here, there's a statement that says 55% of the vehicles are beyond their useful life. What are the written standards and definitions for useful life? I mean, because what we used at the university was one thing, you know, depending on the type of vehicle, and I in particular would be interested in seeing what standards we're using at the city.
So, you know, I'm sure there are probably best practices out there in the fleet maintenance world, you know, and really, useful life is a little bit dependent on our service delivery and what our expectations are. So if you recall, we put the pedal on the metal on replacing some ambulances about three years ago because an ambulance broke down on an EMS call with a patient in the back. I'll give you one example. So typically, on our bigger dump trucks, it's understood that the useful life is 10 years. Andy Rye compiled some numbers for me today. Current fleet age of our large plows is 15 years, and of our pickups and small aerial trucks, the average age is currently 17 years. So I think it's fair to say that when we make statements in the city about fleet being past its useful life, we're not nitpicking a year or two. Most of our vehicles are significantly beyond that mark.
Yeah, again, like, you know, like I said, we had standards at the university. It'd be interesting to see what our preferred standards actually are. I mean, I understand that at 15 years on a dump truck, that's a long time to go on that. I understand that. And same thing with the pickups and the other vehicles that are up to 17 years. But like our small SUVs, what do we use for that protocol? What do we use for our sedans that we have? The cop cars, of course, are a completely different ballpark there. But there should be some kind of written standards that we're basing it on, as you said, the best practices. And that's what we did at Northern, was we had standards that we tried to meet. And so I'm curious to see what those written standards are.
We probably have some work to do on that.
All right, thanks. If you could supply that to council, I think before we make a final decision, I think that'll help a lot.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alderman Morris?
In EEI's study, they did, what was it, EEI and what's their name?
Ellers.
And Ellers. I guess I would imagine that in their study, since they defined the 55%, they would have definitions of what that useful life was, but...
Yeah, and I have that data that could be shared with council very easily.
And I guess the next question I have is just what percentage rates are we looking at? And, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And what the lease span is. So are we looking at, okay, we decide to do this with Enterprise for five years, and then after the five years, we can choose to opt out? Or is there a longer-term commitment? Because in five years, we could, if it's a cash flow issue and, you know, we want to make cash here upfront, if in five years, we can completely change our minds and go the whole other direction, it's less of an issue.
Yeah, and that flexibility exists. So at the end of the five years, if you had an asset, so let's say it's a pickup truck, and you put it on a five-year lease, at the end of that term, you could either roll it into a new lease for a new pickup truck, or if you want to keep that asset because it's still a good asset, you can essentially buy your way out of that lease, and I'll look to Matt to make sure that that's the appropriate terminology. But that equity that remains in the vehicle that we would take advantage of if we rolled it into a new lease, that's about the amount that we would be looking at for that end-of-lease buyout. So that's a cost and a consideration, and all those things need to be examined as part of this.
Ray, I'm going to assume that for this year, 2020, we have the additional dollars from MFT that will allow us to do the laundry list that you shared with us that equals $1.1 million or something to that effect. My question is, how soon should we have a decision made if, in fact, we feel that either or both of these leasing programs make sense to us? When would you need to know that? When does staff need to know that from council?
Can I answer that, Mayor?
Yes.
May I just jump in, Ray, if you don't mind? I think a decision should happen very soon, once we give you all the information you need to make that decision, for the obvious reasons. If we spend down, let's say, one option would be that, let's just go through this year and see where we are. Ray's already said, and we can repeat, that when we get to the end of this year, we pretty much depleted the cash reserve in the 420 fund, and we'll start next year looking at three vehicles, maybe two or three, and we're losing ground. So the sooner we can, if we're going to do a leasing program, the sooner we can get into that, the better, just because of the circumstances we're in. If we're going to stretch it, that's the way to go. And you can see, generally speaking, that the graphs illustrate that we'll be able to basically double the purchases. But we take on, as Bill said, and as Ray said, we take on an interest obligation, but that is where we are. And we can manage that, we can look, you know, we can manage that from year to year until maybe we can wean ourselves off of that to some extent, but right now, that's where we are.
Alderman Smith?
Ray, a couple of questions. Maintenance costs, are we going to roll those high maintenance costs back into this program that we currently have on our vehicles? Because I know we were throwing money at, I mean, I, both chiefs would agree, we've thrown that normal amount of monies at some vehicles we should have parked in the junkyard a long time ago, I'll be very honest. Can we roll those dollars back into this program? And I take it we would try and get rid of our, replace our priority fleet, if you will, and then roll those vehicles down like we have. So how many dollars do you think we have extra out of maintenance?
So...
Rough idea?
Currently, this year, you know, without having the budget in front of me, we're probably talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000 in vehicle maintenance costs in the budget. It's difficult to say how much we would be able to save as we can accelerate fleet replacement, but I think you're on to something. I wouldn't take those dollars and put them into something else. Alderman Fanouken and I had talked about the idea of sort of a charge-back system, which is how a lot of municipalities pay for their fleet. When you buy a police car, you charge the police department and their general fund a small amount each year based on a depreciation, and when it's time to replace that squad car again, you've already paid for it. So you can start to take some of those maintenance dollars that you're saving and roll them into Fund 420 in that manner, and that starts to kind of get you where you should be.
Yeah, because I really view maintenance costs, the high maintenance costs, the abnormal stuff, as just really a waste of money. I think Alderman Fanouken would probably agree. The other thing I had is fire, I know you probably don't have any, Matt, you probably don't have any fire trucks hanging around, so, and I know we can't lease ambulances, correct, under state law? Or can we?
No, I would have to verify that, but no, it's not a common practice.
Yeah, so, I mean, are we going to buy those pieces of equipment outright? Is that your plan, or...
So the lease financing is really where you would want to take advantage of that. And I'll be perfectly honest with you, when Chief McMaster and I started researching fire apparatus purchases, the major fire manufacturers are all advertising tax-exempt lease financing, and they all work with banks and companies that can provide that. So that's something that's very common in the fire apparatus world right now.
Is that something we would be looking at?
Yeah.
I mean, I would prefer the ambulances came to the door. I mean, I think most of us would.
Yeah.
And I was around when that one broke down. I agree, that's, you know, disastrous. And I was around when we were replacing squad cars. I think John, what, the whole fleet every, we rotated the whole fleet probably once every three years, and our maintenance costs were next to nothing because of warranty. Another question I have is, is there any increased maintenance costs or plans, Matt, that we have to abide by? You know, sometimes fleet maintenance agreements have higher maintenance, just preventative maintenance because of the asset.
No extra requirements, just we get help with the scheduling, we have technology help with, you know, all that.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Alderman Favor?
Thank you very much for compiling this and putting this all together. I really appreciate that. One of the questions I had was, we kind of touched on it already, so the police cars we have, are the police cruisers and things, who purchase those through the state? Are those going to be available through Enterprise, or that's a special vehicle? We still going to have to purchase that through the state?
So those are actually available through the Enterprise program. They work it a little bit different. Those are higher-risk assets for Enterprise, so they depreciate them a little bit more quickly. So at the end of the life, there's less equity left in the vehicle, but they do have the capability to do that.
Okay. And then, I know in the write-up, it was talking about our cap for leasing is $1 million. Do you expect this to exceed that, you know, in what we've decided to potentially lease? Do we need to come back and revise that? Does the board need to be thinking about that?
So that carve-out in the policy is specific to what would be akin to the tax-exempt lease financing and not necessarily the open-ended equity leasing program. And it's $1 million per fiscal year. I think that number is probably safe. The one thing that I did point out in the backup material is if we wanted to put that type of financing on, say, a fire engine, costs for those types of assets have gone up since we've written that policy, so we may need to look at an adjustment on that, but we would bring those to you if they were necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Alderman Morris?
So just to be clear, then, it is a car-by-car buyout to get out of the leases. It's not a collective plan?
Correct. Every individual vehicle has its own pricing, and we've seen that, so we have an idea of what that looks like, and Enterprise has been pretty transparent to this point, and so we have an idea of what that looks like.
And do we have any idea on the range on those interest rates?
We're based off the three-year trajectory bill, plus 300 basis points. So right now, we're between 1.3 and 1.4 percent, somewhere around there.
Matt, you might want to come up to the podium so that we could hear you a little bit better. Some of us hear better than others.
We're based off the three-year trajectory bill, so whatever that does, plus 300 basis points, so it fluctuates from month to month, but somewhere around, I think, 4% right now.
So the percentage rate that you get is at the time of purchase, and it doesn't fluctuate, though?
Correct, at the time of delivery.
Delivery.
Yep, and that's a fixed rate.
Alderman Perkins?
Does this analysis give any consideration to certain types of vehicles, certain populations, or what assumptions are made in that respect? Does this analysis give any consideration to certain types of vehicles, certain populations, or what assumptions were made in that respect?
Yes, so when we did the analysis, we based it off our current capital improvement plan and the vehicles that are scheduled for replacement. So if you're asking, you know, the numbers aren't inflated because we put 39 low-price vehicles in there. Those include the dump trucks, the fire engines, the ambulances. So that cash flow analysis and number of assets to be acquired is based off our actual capital improvement plan and the vehicles that are scheduled for replacement.
So it just followed, but the, the thought of what the replacement order was going to be, whatever came up next would be the next one that went in there. There wasn't, there wasn't special consideration given to, we'll just do pickups, or just do police cars in that way. It was just more just age of asset then, right?
Correct. It's, it's a complete mix of assets.
Okay.
Alderman Smith.
Do we, Ray, you've probably done this, I know I was probably sure I called you beforehand. What about once we unload some of the old assets, what are we going to do with the value, the dollars we get from those? Are you going to roll it back in? Is that your thought?
Yeah, those, any, any vehicles that we surplus, those revenues get rolled into 4, Fund 420. Enterprise, I believe, can help us with the liquidation of some of those assets that get replaced through their program. Other assets could be trade-in value, some we've had good success with online auction sales.
And one more thing, timeframe for enterprise, I mean, squad cars under state purchase, I don't, John, price it, take forever? It seems like, I mean, what is, I guess, what's your turnaround for us? I mean, if we say yes, and, you know, they work, city works out the details.
Yeah, so good question. We can turn around, you know, getting the account activated and getting the vehicles on order pretty quickly, once you say go. We're really based on the manufacturer lead times. So squad cars, I've heard it's pretty bad out there. It could be six months to a year you're waiting. We're looking at Durango's and other options for that as well. But for a regular car, pickup truck, could be eight to 12 weeks, so varies. But we would manage all that for you guys.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because I want the council to understand that it's not a normal order from the factory for squad car. They only run the lines a couple of times a year. I think probably Chief Petragala would agree with that.
They're about four months.
Four months, yeah. So it takes a while to get them in, so I just, I mean, our assets are going to depreciate more and get in worse shape, so I guess that's where I'm going with that. So, thank you very much.
This question may have been answered already, but it's, so it's very conceivable that we could work with both alternatives?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, especially since the enterprise program does not include some of the, what I would call the higher-end items.
And that's precisely why we looked at both options.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Are there any further comments or questions? Ray, Bill, any other thoughts, or Mr. Deland, anything else that you'd like to mention?
Yeah, I just had a few things to add.
Yeah.
Everything Ray said is, is right on point. I just want to make sure that you guys are aware too, in terms of like the lease term and the flexibility, there's no contract where you're locked into five years with us. You can get out of the vehicles at any time. There's also non-appropriations clause in our contract if, for whatever reason, you don't have the funds available. In terms of medium-duty vehicles, I know there's some bigger vehicles out there. We can now do 33,000 GBW and above as well, as long as the insurance requirements are there. So that is available to you. We looked at the paperwork. It looks like everything should be fine from an insurance standpoint on our side for risk. And then there was a note in here about buyout costs at the end of the lease. Our goal is always to make sure you're in an equity position, meaning the resale value of that vehicle at any time should be higher than the amount you owe on that vehicle, the residual book value, the balance on that. So after year one, year two, you should be in an equity position, meaning if you wanted to, you can sell that vehicle in year two and take a $3,000 equity gain and, you know, roll that into a new vehicle, sell it, whatever have you. So at the end of the lease, you have some options as well. You can, you know, buy out the, the book balance of that vehicle. So let's say you've written it down to a balance of $10,000. It's worth 15. You say, hey, you know what, this is a good truck. We just want to hold on to this. We're just going to pay off that $10,000 over the next 12 months, 24 months, what have you. You can also just pay that off immediately, take, you know, $10,000, pay it off, that vehicle, take title. What most of our customers do is have us advise them eight to 12 months before that vehicle's coming to its quote-unquote sweet spot, and tell them, hey, you know, we think this vehicle's going to be the, the best value for resale, you know, in a year. Let's sell that vehicle now and take the value of that vehicle and roll it into your, your next lease. So it's kind of like you're funding your own self-sustaining fleet program by looking at these vehicles as depreciating assets. Think of us as like a financial planner for your fleet. So your, your financial planner comes to you with all your assets, your portfolio of investments, advises you based on the market conditions, when the best time to sell and buy things, things are. We would do the same thing. So, and it happens frequently where, for City of Chicago is a customer of ours, they had a Ford Explorer. A year later, it was worth more than they paid for it, so we sold it and gave them the profits. Doesn't happen all the time, but by having someone who's managing this for you, you guys can go back to managing the city. We manage the vehicles for you. There's also a consultation side of this. It's not just funding. We're not just going to, here's your 20 vehicles, we'll see you in five years. It's, every year, you have an account manager who's going to come in and analyze this, you know, ongoing, work with you on budgets, everything like that. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that as well. There's another side kind of to that. It's not just set and forget it type approach, so.
Alderman Fanuk.
Well, actually, not so much for Matt, but Ray mentioned a charge-back system to the departments. I think that's something that, that I'd be happy to work with Ray and the administration on, at least investigating. Because in our time at Northern, we found that that gave the departments a little bit more ownership and pride in their vehicles, and tended to lessen the abuse when they had to pay for things that, you know, shouldn't have happened to vehicles. And that's just something that will also help us fund our capital that way.
Yeah, we're definitely going to call on you, Alderman Fanuk, for sure. Any other comments or questions? Ray and Bill, what are you looking for tonight? A consensus that, that this council feels comfortable with the two leasing programs?
Sure. Members of the council. It appears to me that you want us to, to consider the, the comments that were made here tonight, one of which is the written standards for useful life, which you picked up. Bill also mentioned the buyback system. I, I have experience with that as well. When Bill retired, I was, I was left with declining revenue at, at NIU as Vice President of Operations, and that system kind of fell apart. But I'm willing to look at it and talk to Bill about it and anybody else. But at this point, what I'd like to do is maybe bring this back as a consideration at the next council meeting on February 10th. If you have any other thoughts in between, please let me, let me know, or let Ray know. And if we can settle on the fact that leasing is a viable option, then I think you give it to the administration, we bring back to you what, whatever instruments we think are necessary to make some of this happen, we'll give you a couple options specifically. Because as you know, we have about nine vehicles here, and they're just, it's just money sitting in the fund right now. It's not working for us. We'd like to get something working for us as soon as possible. And with these lead times, we'd sure like to make some purchases this year. So, and the needs are there, as you know. So I'd like to bring back an action plan and then also a consideration for you.
Is council comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Ray? Alderman Perkins.
I'm interested in one more thought, too. I guess, and that would go towards the extent of that we're going to do this. Would we look at doing all the vehicles in a certain arena, half of them, a third of them, if that makes sense? Kind of a blended approach.
I think we need, and I need to spend some time with this gentleman, or whatever leasing agencies we're going to, and we may have to put that up for bid too, but, yeah, that's a great question, and maybe there are a few that we are going to buy outright, just to get the ball rolling, and then we can look at some leasing for others.
Okay, Ray, Matt, thank you very much. Bill, I think you've got your consensus from council. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Let's move along to our second consideration for the night, and that is a presentation of the DeKalb County Basics Program by Amanda Christensen, the Superintendent of the Regional Office of Education. I think Courtney, you're going to be there also, so Amanda, it's all yours.
Hello, friends. How are you?
Hello.
All right, so we are, first of all, you, you may wonder, well, why are we here? Why would we want to come in front of you? And I think that we wanted to make sure we were sharing with you work that is happening regarding early learning, kindergarten readiness. What is the, the current status of our, our infants and toddlers? And what can we do together as a community to, to help them thrive? So, Kindergarten Readiness Collaborative. I, I need to give you a little bit of history about that, and then Courtney is going to cover, is going to cover what basics DeKalb County is. First, we have to look at this, though, within the framework of collective impact. So within the framework of collective impact, no one organization can solve these complex social problems. And so we are here with you tonight to let you know work that has started, and also to say, we need partners everywhere. Whatever partner looks like, we need to be working together for our children. And so you were given a, a sample of what a partner pledge looks like. What we're asking for, and that's what we use typically with our, our, let's say, our libraries, our park districts. But we are looking for, you know, whatever way in which this body would show support, whether it's resolution, or whether it is letter of support. We want you to know the work that, the work that we are doing. It actually goes back to, oops, yep, there we are. It goes back to 2014, DeKalb County Community Foundation did a collective impact study, and they surveyed the residents. And what emerged from that is that education, particularly early education, was of great concern to, to our county overall. And from that came the kindergarten readiness, it was a working group at the beginning. It's now called the Kindergarten Readiness Collaborative. And from that working group, NIU was commissioned to, to do a, pretty much a, a state of our children. And so you can access the full report. We only have a couple data points to, to share with you. But from this report, we then moved into focus groups of early educator, early learning educators, our kindergarten teachers, our principals in elementary schools, as well as community members and parents. And, and we realized there was this huge divide between this early learning world and our K-12 world. And they were not completely talking, and didn't, and we were not, we were not aligned. So from that, what was born was a, a group of loose work goals at the beginning. And the ROE, Regional Office of Education, ROE was contracted to do much of that work, to try to bring these two worlds together. Networking, providing professional development, creating a system of alignment from birth through, through grade three, really. So some, some tall order that we're, we're still working on. But what has happened is we now have a much more formal strategic plan. And from that more formal strategic plan, as, as a kindergarten readiness collaborative, one of our objectives, and I want to read it directly so that you, you understand why it's important that we're working together. One of our objectives is, every sector of the community understands and supports the healthy development of infants and young children. Now, that objective, as a, as a, as a collaborative, like, okay, so how do we, how do we actionalize this? How do we, how do we, you know, turn it into real awareness in, in our, in our community? No matter what, what sector of the community you are, you're coming from. So we happened upon Basics, it's called. It started in Boston, started with Dr. Ron Ferguson. He came here, met with early learning educators, and they all said, yes. Yes, we need this message, but you're telling the wrong people. Don't tell us. We already know this. You need to tell everybody else. And so as a collaborative, we did decide to formally adopt Basics. Turned it into Basics DeKalb County and have, and have launched it. Now, a couple of the other things to keep in mind in the, the bigger picture here. What is kindergarten readiness? We certainly mean academic, but we also mean, and this is, this is honoring, our kindergarten teachers who very clearly told us, I can help them with the academics when they get to me. I really need them coming to us with greater socially-emotional learning skills. And so we're looking at not only the academics, but we're also looking at how are our children socially and emotionally before they ever even walk into a, a kindergarten classroom? Some key data points are up here. Let's just say, though, you know, like I said, you can access the whole report. Let's just say that in a broad picture, we are not yet adequately serving, supporting, and nurturing our birth-to-age-five and helping them be ready before they ever walk into a, a, a formalized K-12 school. And so with the formalization of adopting Basics DeKalb County, we did seek funding partners. We are largely funded by McCormick Foundation right now. So please know that while my office does support and is the house for Basics DeKalb County, the funding is not coming from my office. I don't have that type of funding from my office in particular. And so we, we, we did find a very supportive partner in McCormick Foundation, and then we are looking at building a sustainability plan in order to really approach this as a systems-change initiative. And so with that, Courtney was hired in April of 2019, and she will talk to you specifically about what are the basics.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, council, for having us. Just a really quick agenda about what I'm going to talk about. As Amanda said, I'm going to talk about why we need the basics, why we think we need the basics, and then what are they? So the basics, as Amanda said, actually started in Boston at Harvard University. This was developed by Dr. Ron Ferguson, who's the Director of the Achievement Gap Initiative. Started in Boston, came here to DeKalb. And it's all about this amazing fact that I'm showing you guys on the screen here, that I think when you see it, that is like the wow moment. We know through recent research, brain development research, that 80% of brain growth actually happens in the first three years of a child's life. I love this visual here because it really puts it into picture. It's showing neuron growth and connections over time. You can see here that actually, that two-year-old's brain actually looks more like an adult's brain than it does a newborn. That's because so much growth, so much development is happening, happening so rapidly. And we know it's such a critical time period to make sure that our children are getting everything they need so that they can start off life on a good foot. Unfortunately, what we see, if you're not familiar with the Achievement Gap, as I said, this is coming out of the Achievement Gap Initiative. If you're not familiar with what an Achievement Gap is, it's where we see a disparity between groups of children. Typically, it's by race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status. It used to be thought that the Achievement Gap was in high school, middle school. We saw it later. Again, through that recent research, we are seeing these opportunity gaps happen very, very early, actually by age two. So not even halfway to kindergarten, and certain kids are falling behind. You can see that gap is about, that represents about six months at age two. We know that when kids start behind, it's really hard for them to catch up, and they tend to stay behind. So by kindergarten, that gap has doubled, and then by 17, so the age, right, right around graduation, that's about three to four years of learning that some kids are missing out on. We can see that. Here's the Achievement Gap by socioeconomic status. We know that kids that are coming from near, or low-income households have a harder time showing up to school ready compared to our, our moderate or high-income households. I really want to put into perspective how important kindergarten readiness is. It's not just kindergarten. It actually has some lifelong implications. This was a study done by the Brookings Institute, and it's showing the probability of mastering basic skills in fifth grade is actually very much dependent on how that child came into kindergarten. So if they were ready in kindergarten, there's an 82% chance they're going to hold those skills in fifth grade and beyond. Unfortunately, that's cut in half if they're not ready. Those are all national-level data. I'm going to put this on a local perspective for you. If you're not aware, the Illinois State If you're not aware, the Illinois State Board of Education mandates that every single kindergarten teacher in the state of Illinois is measuring readiness in their classroom. Happens in the first 40 days, so it's truly measuring what kids know coming into kindergarten, not what they're learning there. So I do want to make a point that this data is not a reflection on our kindergarten teachers or our school districts. This is a reflection on parents, caregivers, and the community that has had these children for five years before they walk into that classroom. If you can't see the data, I will just quickly point out, we're here in DeKalb, I'll point out, this is our county's data. I'll point out DeKalb School District, and it is 22% of kindergarteners are ready for school. So that means you have to be ready in three areas, I should say. This is all online. You can dive further into this. Basically, what I'm trying to show you is that, as Amanda said, we are not preparing our children for kindergarten, and we want to do something about that. You can't know all this and not do anything about it. And that's where we come to the basics. What are the basics? The basics are five fun, simple, and powerful ways that anybody can interact with children to make sure that they're going to get that great start in life. My personal favorite thing about the basics is that they're free. You don't need fancy tech. You don't need a PhD. Anybody from any background can interact with children that will promote brain development. We do have a lovely website. We don't have a lot of time, but I just wanted to point that out. Lots of tips, lots of resources. So go check it out if you, if you get a chance. It's basicsdekalbcounty.org. I know we don't have a lot of time, so I'm not going to go over examples of what the basics are. I did provide that in handouts to you guys. I'll just talk a little bit about why each one's important. The first basic is maximize love and manage stress. And this just talks about children thrive when they feel loved and safe and secure. When our children feel safe and they have that person, that family, that caregiver to bounce back on, that's where they're going to learn how to manage their feelings and manage their behavior. Next one is toxining point. We know through research that the more that children are exposed to language, the earlier, the better. The better their vocabularies, the better their language acquisition. So we just want parents, caregivers to know, just talk, talk, talk the minute that your baby is born. Next is count group and compare. I love how Dr. Ferguson says that every single one of us has a brain that's wired for math. You know, we tend to say like, I'm not a math person. I'm just not good at it. And that's just not true. Again, studies that show there's three-month-olds that can recognize patterns. One-year-olds who can't even talk are already learning numeracy. Next basic is explore through movement and play, and this just talks about the importance of play for children. It's how they learn about themselves. It's how they learn about the world and how they fit into the world. Our last one is read and discuss stories. This just talks about, we know that reading makes children confident thinkers, critical thinkers. Again, helps with that language, and the really important part here is that discussion. So asking questions like, what did you like best? Why was the girl sad? What do you think is going to happen next? Again, that's a quick overview. There's much more resources in the handouts that we did provide for you guys. So now that you know what the basics are, okay, great information. How do we get this out to our community? And this is why we call ourselves, that's that Community Saturation Project. As Amanda said, we want every single resident in DeKalb County to know the basics, to value the basics, and we plan to do that. This is a nice little visual. It's called socioecological saturation. So you can see here in the middle is that caregiver and child. That's ultimately who we want to impact, and we all live in this social ecology with all of these institutions around us. That's where your norms, your values, your beliefs, your behaviors, that all influences that child and caregiver. So we want to saturate every single sector here in DeKalb County. We do service the entire county, but we obviously focus on DeKalb, the City of DeKalb as well. So we want everybody in one of these institutions to know value in the basic, value of the basics, and we think that's where we're going to see those caregiver, those outcomes for those children and those caregivers. We do this through a couple of different ways. We work through existing organizations. One of our biggest implementation partners is the DeKalb County Health Department. They have remodeled an entire wall in the waiting room to be basics-focused. You're going to hear about basics in your WIC classes, your family case management rooms, your pediatric immunizations. You're just inundated with the basics at the Health Department. Here is another example of the Sycamore Library, sharing the basics in Storytime. We also work, love the folks at the DeKalb Public Library. They're all on board with the basics. We also, here's a couple of examples of our partners. We also do community outreach. Here's some stats for you guys. We started taking stats in July, so these numbers actually aren't even accurate because we've been doing it for longer. We like to meet families where they're at. Instead of expecting them to come find us, we're going to go find them, right? And we're going to interact one-on-one. We always, I will say that every single resource we provide is free. We have handouts, we have magnets, we have activity cards, we have, you name it, we have it. We always are trying to give away stuff in the community that aligns with the basics, books, toys. Again, you don't need stuff to do the basics, but it's nice. Just a really quick slide on how you could be a part of this movement, the city council as a whole, but also you as an individual, is to learn and know the five basics. Let us know about community events. If you want us there, we're always happy to be there. You can become a Basics Ambassador. We meet quarterly, really just brainstorming on how we can further the saturation of these, this message. We have a Facebook page that we're always trying to get out to people like, this is where we're going to be. Come find us. As I said, we have a great website. As Amanda said, though, specifically why we're here approaching city council is really just asking for your support in this. We believe that with the support of the city council, you know, we can really change the trajectories for children right here in the city of DeKalb. The return on investment for early education is substantial. You may not see that ROI for a little bit, but the great thing about it is that it's not just, you know, that specific child or that specific family. It's the larger society as well. When we really build that foundation for early learning, that's when we see especially zero to five, that age range, that's when we're going to see later down the road, less money spent on special education, less money spent on the criminal justice system. That's where we're going to have more children who are going to grow up to be happy, healthy, productive members of society. And with your support behind our initiative, we really think that we can make DeKalb the type of community that supports that development and that nurturing of our children here in DeKalb. Our youngest residents, you know, we want to make sure that every child, no matter what your background is, every child is going to get a great start in life. So thank you so much for your time. I can take any questions if you have any.
Yeah, I find it difficult, Courtney and Amanda, that individually, that the folks up here would not be supportive of this initiative. What I'm looking for is what kind of support? Are we looking at as a resolution? You had mentioned that. A proclamation, appearance before one of our committees, and I could do that. We have 14 boards and commissions, one of which might very, very well be involved in this. I would think our Community Enhancement Commission, Carolyn, our First Ward Alderman, is involved in that as our council liaison. So just a quick question, and we are sort of running out of time. So I, you know, but I think, Council, just as we asked the city manager, what kind of, what kind of consensus does we, do we want on the fleet leasing program? What would you like to hear from us?
Great. And I think what you suggested is great. This is our, this is our first real city council to get to. We haven't been to a village board yet. You know, we're making our way through all of the school boards this year. So, you know, when you looked at that wheel, we have to have, you know, government and all those facets as part of this. So I think that what you suggested is great, and we're also asking for, I think, the, just the awareness and mindset that when you, as city leaders, make decisions, do you have in your mind, too, what is best for our littlest when you are making those decisions? Whether it's zoning or land use or, you know, any, you know, any of these things, community development, economic development, are we considering ways in which the basics and that common language, because that's the power of this, the common language. It's not like we never read to our children before, right? It's the common language of us together supporting our citizens. We work with University Village Collaboration. That's how Carolyn has already heard about us, how Joanne has already heard about us. And so what we are really asking for is exactly that type of brainstorming that, so you as an organizational structure, what can you do to support us? So I'm sorry, I kind of responded to your question with a
A long-winded answer.
A long-winded answer, but it's, it is important. Okay, there's a, there is a point here, though. It's important that whoever, whatever body takes on, yes, we support the basics. You do have to make it your own, too. So in what ways do you want to support and embed the basics, just like the library has decided how, the park district has decided how?
City Mayor, do you have a question?
May I suggest this as we're out of time and the regular meeting is about to start? Actually, it's going to be a little late starting. I'd like to recommend that Joanne Rouse, who's our Community Services Coordinator, get with Amanda and Courtney and find, talk about some next steps, and then she can advise me, and I'll bring something back to the council or message you in some fashion.
Does that sound okay? Okay, Courtney, Amanda, thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
We have no executive session scheduled at this time, and since we are running short, we will adjourn this meeting of the committee of the whole. I'd ask for an, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this committee of the whole meeting. So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. City Council meeting will begin at 6:10, 6:10, in about seven minutes. That will give the city council a chance to take a break, and for the benefit of you and the audience, we'll start here in about seven minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. 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 Good.